Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, September 26, 2016. Rebecca, would you take attendance, please?
Here.
Valerie Anderson. Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Kava. He's here. He was just walking around the facilities.
Okay.
I'm here. Michelle Gora.
Here.
James Hirschfeld.
Here.
Jennifer Pody. Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Peter Tagley.
Here.
Sidney Worble. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So, everyone is here. That's supposed to be here. All right, item two on the agenda, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Anyone? If you would like to, just raise your hand. Anyone who want to address the board? All right, seeing no one, then we'll move on. Consent agenda item, there's a typo here. It's approval of minute September 12, 2016 meeting. Anyone who want to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, then that's approved. Report of the Chair. I do want a report that I received from the First Selectman in Washington. Official notification that Sidney Worble is no longer living in that town, so...
Roxton.
Roxton, I'm sorry, yes. In that town, and so she's resigned. She's tendered her resignation from the board, so we wish her the best. To my understanding, the First Selectman is actively recruiting, may have two new members for the board, I believe.
How did she decide?
She was on the board then, previously. All right, report of the Chair. I have nothing special to report, other than what's on the agenda tonight. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of little things. CAE was asking for arbitrators to sit on the CAE Board of Education, and we did submit Valerie Anderson's name, and so we are waiting to hear, but they did submit her name to Governor Malloy, so let's keep our fingers crossed and hope that Valerie will be selected to serve. So, we're excited about that. That would be wonderful if we can get a Region 12 Board member up at the state. So, good luck, Valerie.
Thank you.
We have an appointment of Robyn Hollister to front entrance security. We have a field trip to the White House Student Film Festival, and those students are going to be presenting in two minutes.[170.12][170.12](APPLAUSE). And then we have a Model UN conference in Boston, and both of those trips need approval. Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Together, I think we'd be good.
I don't believe so. I want most. Valerie's moved.
Should we approve the field trips as described in the agenda?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, it passes. Thank you. All right, anything else?
Well, now we can really move to number six.
Video production. Brianna Pitt and Chapag Valley School students.
Yes, so welcome.
Welcome.
I'm just going to play a quick video for everybody, so they can kind of see the context of what the girls are going to be speaking about next.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. I am Brianna Pitt. I'm a teacher at Chapag School, at Valley School, and I also am in charge of the Video Club at Chapag. I'm just going to play a quick video for everybody to see.
Sometimes we think people are motivated only by money, by power, these very concrete incentives, but people are also inspired by stories.[268.02][268.02](APPLAUSE). The stories they tell themselves about what's important, and about their lives, and about their country, and about their communities. When we come together to do important things, it's usually because we've told a good story about why we should be working together. Stories we tell each other are very, very important.
Hi, I am Roxana Dell, and this is Kaylee, Sierra, Eliza, and Lydia. We are the team that created the film titled "The World I Want to Live In," which is now a finalist in the White House Student Film Festival. We want to thank you for the support you've shown the Video Club over the years, and in particular, over the past few weeks. Few 12-year-olds like me get the opportunity to visit the nation's capital, much less to get entrance to the White House. Making a video was a lot of fun, but also a lot of hard work. Not only did we learn a lot of producing, not only did we learn a lot about producing a video, but we also learned a lot about different issues facing our country.
We will be headed to the Eisenhower Executive Building for the screening portion of the Third Annual White House Student Film Festival on Sunday. There were 27 out of 700 films.
On Monday, we will take part in panel discussions and a music and film festival at the White House South Lawn. Tuesday morning, we will have a private tour of the Capitol Building, courtesy of Congresswoman Elizabeth Estes' staff.
Again, thank you for the ongoing support. It is a great honor to represent our small school at the nation's capital. Video Club is an amazing place to learn, and we look forward to making more films in the future.[410.71][410.71](APPLAUSE).
Would you like me to play the film? All right.[430.81][430.81](LAUGHTER)
Good morning, America. Coming up next, politicians create what to do with our economy. We take a look at this week's pollution-free weather. And Lydia Hagan updates you on local traffic. This is "The World I Want to Live In."
Good morning, America. I'm Adeline Smith.
And I'm Dawn Mascott. It is 11:02 a.m. on Monday, July 2024, and we take a look into your morning news. Today, at the friendly debate, Democrat nominee Brianna Pitt and Republican nominee Sierra Wilson face off at Madison Square Garden. We go to Eliza Guchkov with a look inside the debate.
Thank you, Dawn. So far, the debate has run very smoothly. Both nominees can't seem to stop agreeing with each other.
You know, I propose that both our parties join forces to agree on our economic policy.
What a great idea you have. Both the Democratic and Republican parties should have equal say, and as always, I know we will be able to compromise.
It looks like the Republicans and Democrats will be able to agree on all political issues this year. Back to you, Dawn.
It's great that politicians have realized they get more done when working together. It's hard to believe they were ever in a gridlock.[514.82][514.82](LAUGHTER).
Now for the local weather. We throw to Sage Baker in the studio for more. How's it looking, Sage?
Thanks, Adeline. It's looking beautiful and sunny over in the eastern and western regions of the country this week, with an air quality index of exactly 0% pollution. There may be a little rain on the west coast, but the sun will be shining, and the ozone layer will be completely clear everywhere else. Watch out for the pollen, though, the bees will be buzzing. Remember when there was that bee epidemic in Canada years ago? Crazy, right? Adeline, Dawn, back to you.
And now to...[548.79][548.79](PHONE RINGS). Oh, wait. Looks like we have some breaking news. Chief Justice Ann Parker has just informed us that today marks the 13th consecutive year New York City has been free of violent crime. The move to rehabilitation centers instead of jails sure has taken a bite out of crime.
Wow, Adeline, what a safe world we live in.
Speaking of safety, let's check in with Lydia Hagan with the local traffic. Lydia, what do you see out there on the road?
Hi, Dawn and Adeline. I'm on the road, and there's only mild traffic today. There are a few solar-powered cars today, but most people are running or biking to work, so you may come across someone at some point. It will be a nice sunny day for your solar-powered cars or running or biking to work, and it's looking nice for the rest of the week, based on Sage's weather report. To think, we used to drive gas-run cars. How inefficient and unhealthy. Back to you.
Thanks, Lydia, and thanks to everyone who tuned in. Tomorrow, world leaders discuss how to handle the Great Barrier Reef, Dublin, and the seas. And finally, we get an inside look at how America's education system flows in the achievement of our own. I'm Adeline Smith.
And I'm Dawn Mascott. See you tomorrow on "The World I Want to Live."[615.04][615.04](APPLAUSE).
Well, speaking for myself, that was really great, having seen it for the first time. Congratulations. Really great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Yeah, good luck, yeah. Absolutely. Of course.
The acting was almost as good as the film itself. Really, very smart, very, very good. You should be very proud.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving next item, number seven, REACH Scholarship Program.
Okay, so I'll fill you in on what happened or transpired at the very end of August, very end of July, beginning of August. I received an email from a gentleman by the name of Joe Paletto, who grew up in Bridgewater. He and his wife Sarah, who are now based in California, created a foundation called the Blue Rose Foundation, and this foundation awards preschool scholarships to children from economically disadvantaged families. And 100% of the money that they raise goes to funding preschool scholarships. Over the last three years, they've raised $150,000 for two Sonoma, California preschools, allowing children that would otherwise be unable to attend preschool to do so. He called, touched base, wanted to make an impact on his home school, and asked, you know, what the potential to be able to support REACH preschool with his foundation. So, he has an event that is scheduled for October 20th, that he'd like the proceeds to go to the REACH preschool. He believes that in that, over the next five years, he'll be able to raise $50,000 and award $10,000 a year to families that need financial support to attend our REACH program. Blue Rose Foundation.
Rose?
Mrs. O'Hara and I will be going to their celebration fundraiser on October 20th in Manhattan. Anyone who would like to join us, let us know, and we'll buy you a ticket. Thank you.
Okay. And then, just before I go, you have an invitation from REACH to come visit, if you have a chance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course, go ahead.
Did she leave?
Allie, you may have to answer a question.
I was just wondering, it's, sorry. Well, I think that's wonderful and generous, and I'm very appreciative, and I'm just wondering, have you found that there's been a need for this?
Right, so Joe and I had that conversation just around the, that while we have supported families with scholarships, that $10,000 was a very generous amount for the cost of our preschool. But I think what this will allow us to do is open up our criteria. Right now, we use the free and reduced lunch, which limits, obviously, so this would allow us to open up that criteria, to be a little less stringent, and support maybe more families that find it very challenging still to pay, but do because they want the educational opportunity.
Wonderful. That's great. Thanks.
All right, anyone? I thank you, Ellen. All right, item eight, progress report, Region 12 student achievement. Mr. Brito.
Mr. Brito.
Mr. Brito.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The region's standardized test results booklet was just passed out to all of you, so I am going to do a little presentation and go through the entire booklet with you at this time. When you open to page three, I just want to give a brief introduction of what you will learn this evening. I will share with you the results for the spring 2016 Smarter Balanced results for grades three through eight in English Language Arts and Literacy, and in Mathematics. I will also share with you the results for the CMT Science for grades five and eight, and the CAPT Grade 10 Science results, as well as the Grade 11 SAT results for reading and writing, and for mathematics. Some background information, last year was the first year of full implementation of the Smarter Balanced test, which is given to students in grades three through eight. Last year, we also administered it in grade 11, but we no longer do that for grade 11. The law did change this year, and we did administer the SAT to grade 11, so we do not have comparison data for the new redesigned SAT, and we don't have comparison data for Smarter Balanced for grade 11, because we no longer administer that particular assessment. Just want to make sure that you know that the administrators do meet with teachers and look at the results, and they do develop SMART goals that are aligned to student learning needs. As we go through the results, it's important to note that there may be slight variation in the percentages, because the state reports out to the hundreds place, but our data system reports out just to the whole number, so therefore, there might be slight difference, but I will point that out to you. Another difference that is important to note is that the district percentage includes any outplayed students, but they are not a part of the school reports. Therefore, again, there is a discrepancy, a slight discrepancy potential for any particular schools that do have students placed out of the district. We will also be looking at the district reference group comparison, and we are in DURG-C. And just as a reminder, the development of this particular comparison is based on income, education, occupation, and family structure for the different districts. The CMT, CAPT, SAT, and Smarter Balanced do have different bands of reporting. So, the SAT and the Smarter Balanced are reported on four levels, but the CMT and CAPT are reported on five levels, the traditional goal and advanced levels. But for the SAT and Smarter Balanced, they were achievement levels, met, and exceeded. On page five, there's just an overview of the specific criteria that is assessed for the Smarter Balanced assessment. In English Language Arts, students are assessed on their ability to read closely and analytically, and to be able to comprehend a range of increasingly complex literary and informational texts. For writing, students are assessed on their ability to produce effective and well-grounded writing for a range of purposes and audiences. Students also are assessed, and they're listening, again, for a range of purposes and audiences. They do listen to an audio, and have to take notes on what they hear, and then they have to respond to questions that are based on the audio they listen to. And the last component is research and inquiry, and students engage in research and inquiry to investigate topics and analyze and integrate information that they read during the assessment. In mathematics, the concepts and procedures, the assessment is really looking at whether students can apply mathematical concepts and interpret and carry out mathematical procedures with precision and fluency. Problem solving is also another skill that is measured, that students are able to solve a range of complex problems. That students are also able to communicate reasoning, that they can clearly and precisely construct viable arguments to support their own reasoning. And finally, modeling and data analysis, that students are able to analyze real-world scenarios and construct and use mathematical models to interpret and solve problems. Page six is an overview of the redesigned SAT. I included this just as a comparison, because it is a brand-new assessment. It definitely does have differing components compared to the former SAT, so the graphic here, this chart, just shows the comparison between the two. One very important note is that although the SAT still does have the optional writing at this point, the Connecticut SAT Day testing for grade 11 students does not include the optional essay. If a student wanted to participate in that, they would have to take that in a separate time and location. On page seven, just an overview of science. Science, CMT, and CAPT have not changed in recent years. We do still assess students in grades five and eight, and they are assessed on life science, physical science, earth science, and scientific inquiry. The state requires us to use embedded tasks during instructional time, and students are then asked specific questions regarding those tasks when they take the assessment. The CAPT looks at the application of scientific concepts to real-world situations, so scientific inquiry and scientific reasoning are a large component of the test. Additional piece of information, I just want to thank the building-level administrators and the teachers for all their efforts, because you will see huge gains in the forthcoming pages. So, now we're on page eight. Overall, as a district, in English Language Arts and Literacy, Smarter Balanced results show just over 12 percentage point gain, which is a ninth in the state. For mathematics, the overall gain is nearly 16 percentage points, and we are fourth in the state, showing improvement. The graphic underneath...[1374.13][1374.13](APPLAUSE). The graph underneath shows the two-year results as a graphical representation of those percentages. On page nine, overall results for the district by grade for Smarter Balanced, and these are 2016 results. So, in grade three, English Language Arts, just over 76% met the level of achievement, and in Mathematics, just over 88% of our third graders, taking an assessment like this for the first time, were able to meet the achievement level. Grade four, for English Language Arts Literacy, 80% met the achievement level, and just over 76% for Mathematics. Grade five, 75% met the achievement level in English Language Arts, and just over 66% in Mathematics. Grade six, 86% met the ELA Literacy achievement level, and 72% for Mathematics. Grade seven, 73% met the ELA achievement level, and just over 58% for Mathematics. And grade eight, 70, just over 70%, met the ELA achievement level, and just over 59% in Mathematics. Just under that, we have the results for the District for Connecticut Mastery Test. In particular, I want to highlight grade eight, nearly a 10 percentage point gain. And for grade 10, the CAPT, again, nearly a 12 percentage point gain for this year's results.
Really good. Great.
Just underneath that, we have the longitudinal results for CMT and CAP, because we have been administering them for a very long time, as you can see there. The color coding is there, because I know you like to see the groups of students. Now, the assessments are different, and they're not year-to-year, but they are there, so if you wanted to actually see how students progressed through, how they did in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade. And then, at the bottom, the 2016 SAT results, just over 79% met achievement level in English Language Arts, and just over 57% in Mathematics. On page 10, I did include...
Excuse me, Teresa.
Yes.
Michelle had her hand up.
Sure.
I'm just wondering, if you're going to get to it, then don't answer, but I was wondering if you could tell me, since this is our first year looking at the SAT, what the state was looking for? What, 57% of the students got what in the...
They met the achievement level, level three. Are you talking about the raw score?
The SAT.
Right.
Yeah, but what did they set that at?
For a raw score, I can get that for you, yeah. And we'll look at SAT a little further down, yeah. That's okay. So, on page 10, it just, I have shared with you the results from last year's English Language Arts, and then this year. And again, the color coding is just so that you can follow the group, but I make a note of it in the middle box. It's important for you to know that the performance task was removed from this year's English Language Arts assessment. So, there is a change in this year's assessment, but the percentages are there, just so that you can see how students have done over the past two years. Performance task. There was a part of the assessment that required students to read some information, and then they were asked to write for a specific purpose and audience. They might have been asked to write an informational, they might have been asked to do a long write, multiple paragraphs of a narrative. That whole, that whole long piece was taken out. Instead, they kept short responses that they felt still were able to measure students' ability to write coherently, but it did reduce the testing time, and that was the reason that the state had announced this change. The second half of page 10, the overall Smarter Balanced two-year results for Mathematics. Again, you can see grades three through eight, how students performed in 2015, and how they performed in 2016. There was no change to the mathematics portion of the Smarter Balanced test. And then you can see by school, and you can definitely see the significant gains per grade as they move from last year to, or 2015 to 2016. On page 11 is the breakdown by school, and by grade, and by content for the elementary schools.
Do you see the purpose of category by school? Do you know, do you include that in the collective survey?
I do both, because it's always been reported that way. If you want me to stop reporting that way, I, okay. It's always been reported that way. You've always seen all the individual schools and collectively as a whole district.
Peter, don't you think that's a relevant piece of information for the board to have?
I know we all have a different opinion of how the primary schools should be structured, and...
Well, as long, while they're structured as they are, I think it is reasonable information for us to have. Valerie?
I think the time has come not to, mainly because we are so, so small, that we're going to see five kids in fifth grade at Burnham and know exactly what their test results are versus 30 in Washington, which would be more homogenized. So, the time has come.
All right, you may...
Okay. Pages 12 through 18 provide the ELA Literacy DURG comparisons. So, on page 12, overall as a district, Region 12 performed at 76.5%, meeting the achievement level. So, I'm going to... level. The graph that is there shows that out of the 76.5%, just over 36% of the students exceeded, were in Level Four, where 40% were in Level Three. And in regard to overall performance, Region 12 ranked 34th in the state, outperforming Brookfield, Fairfield, Madison, New Fairfield, Newtown, Region Five, and West Hartford from DURG B, and Greenwich from DURG A. The breakdown, yes.
Can you give us a minute to absorb that? Can you share that with me?
I'm going to be saying it quite a bit. On page 13, this now is comparison grade for the district. So, grade three, Region 12, just over 76% of the students met the achievement level, and the graphic there shows you that over half of them were in the exceeded range, Level Four, where just over 21% were in Level Three for meeting expectation. Grade three ranked 32nd in the state, outperforming Region 15, New Fairfield, Granby, Monroe, West Hartford, Fairfield, Orange, Brookfield, Region Five from DURG B, and Weston from DURG A. Page 14. District-wide, grade four, 80% of our students met the proficiency level. Nearly half of them were in the exceeded range.
Yes, they are.
And just over 30% were in the Level Three met range. Grade four ranked 23 in the state, outperforming Cheshire, Region 15, Glastonbury, Woodbridge, Orange, Newtown, Greenwich, Fairfield, West Hartford, New Fairfield, Brookfield, Region Five from DURG B, and Weston from DURG A. Page 15, grade five, 75% of our students met the achievement level. Nearly 40% of those students were in the exceeded range, and just over 36% were in the met range. Grade five ranked 56 in the state, outperforming Brookfield, New Fairfield, Madison, Region Five from DURG B, and Wilton from DURG A. Page 16. Grade six. You can see we're first in our DURG.
Tremendous.
86% of the students met the achievement level. 38% were in the exceeded range, where 48% were in the met range. We ranked fifth in the state, outperforming Avon, Glastonbury, Granby, Woodbridge, Simsbury, Trumbull, Guilford, Cheshire, Fairfield, Farmington, Greenwich, New Fairfield, South Windsor, Region 15, Monroe, Newtown, West Hartford, Madison, Brookfield from DURG B, and Westport, Wilton, Weston, New Canaan, Ridgefield, Easton, and Reading from DURG A. Page 17. For grade seven, English Language Arts, 73% of our students met the level of achievement. The graphic there shows close to 24% being at the exceeded range, and just over 49% were at the met Level Three range. Grade seven ranked 43rd in the state, outperforming New Fairfield, West Hartford, Madison, Brookfield, Orange, and Woodbridge, all from DURG B. Page 18. Region 12 students in eighth grade. Here, we have just over 70% of the students meeting the achievement level, just over 23% were in the exceeded range, and just close to 47% were in the met range. We ranked 48th in the state, still outperforming New Fairfield, West Hartford, Madison, Orange, and Woodbridge from DURG B. Pages 19 through 25 provide the, provide the comparisons for the mathematics results in grades three through eight. So, overall, Region 12, just over 68% of our students in grades three through eight met the achievement level. And if you look at the graph there, it's just over 31% were in the exceeded range, and just over 36% were in the met Level Three range. We ranked 27th in the state, outperforming Region Five, Simsbury, Monroe, Greenwich, Region 15, Fairfield, Cheshire, Granby, Madison, Brookfield, New Fairfield, West Hartford from DURG B, and Wilton from DURG A. Page 20.
These kids must be pretty smart.
Grade three mathematics. Remember that math program that we came and shared with you just two years ago? So, our students ranked first in the DURG. They ranked fifth in the state, outperforming Trumbull, Madison, Region 15, Glastonbury, Monroe, South Windsor, New Fairfield, Farmington, Guilford, Avon, Newtown, Greenwich, Woodbridge, Cheshire, Simsbury, Fairfield, Brookfield, Orange, Granby, West Hartford, Region Number Five from DURG B, and Westport, Darien, Ridgefield, Weston, and Wilton from DURG A. As you can see the graphic, we have nearly 55% of those third graders are in the exceeded range, and just over 33% were in the Level Three met range. Page 21, grade four mathematics, just over 76% of the students met the achievement level. As you can see, just over 36% were in the exceeded range, and 40% were in the met range. Students ranked 18th in the state, outperforming Madison, South Windsor, Glastonbury, Guilford, Greenwich, New Fairfield, Fairfield, Cheshire, Granby, West Hartford, Newtown, Orange, Simsbury, Region 15, Woodbridge, Brookfield from DURG B, and Weston, Wilton from DURG A. Page 22, grade five mathematics. Just over 66% met the achievement level. Just over 30% of those students were in the exceeded range, and just over 36% were in the met range. Grade five students ranked 25th in the state, outperforming Newtown, Granby, Orange, Fairfield, Madison, South Windsor, Greenwich, Avon, Region 15, West Hartford, Brookfield, and New Fairfield, all from DURG B. Page 23, grade six mathematics. 72% of our students met the achievement level. 32% were in the exceeded range, and 40% were in the met Level Three range. Grade six students ranked 11th in the state, outperforming Woodbridge, Newtown, Granby, Simsbury, Farmington, Fairfield, Cheshire, South Windsor, Greenwich, Guilford, New Fairfield, Monroe, West Hartford, Brookfield, Region 15, Region 10, and Madison, all from DURG B, and New Canaan, Westport, Easton, Wilton, Weston, Reading, and Ridgefield in DURG Page 24. Grade seven mathematics. Nearly 55% of the students met the achievement level. You can see just over 22% were in the exceeded, and just over 32% were in the met range. Grade seven students ranked 55th in the state, outperforming West Hartford, New Fairfield, Orange, and Woodbridge, all from DURG B. Page 25, grade eight mathematics. Just over 59% met the achievement level. Nearly 22% were in the exceeded range, and just over 37% were in the met range. Grade eight students ranked 36th in the state, outperforming Monroe, Granby, West Hartford, Orange, and Woodbridge, all from DURG B. Page 26 through 28, these pages show our results for science. The state has not reported out the exact percentages for each achievement level, and so when I use our data system for reporting these, they do not have it to any decimal. So, there is a slight discrepancy, so when you notice that, you'll know why. The state provided all the other results, but they're still working on these. So, for grade five science, nearly 78% met the achievement level, 19% were at the advanced, and 58% at the goal. Now, this is on that five-level reporting that we were used to. Grade five students ranked 57th in the state, outperforming Newtown, Madison, Guilford, West Hartford, New Fairfield, Region Five, all from DURG B. Page 27, grade eight students, nearly 86% met goal. You can see from the graphic, 36% were at the advanced level, and 50% were at the goal level out of the nearly 86% of students. Grade eight students ranked 11th in the state, outperforming Granby, Simsbury, Newtown, Monroe, Fairfield, Farmington, Avon, Greenwich, Cheshire, Brookfield, South Windsor, Madison, Region 15, Guilford, Region Five, Trumbull, New Fairfield, West Hartford, Woodbridge, and Orange from DURG B, and Westport, Weston, Easton, Reading, and Ridgefield from DURG Page 28, CAPT results for grade 10. Just over 69% of our students met goal. You can see in the graphic that out of those students, 42% of them are at the advanced level, and 27% were at the goal level. Grade 10 students ranked 32nd in the state, outperforming Cheshire, Brookfield, New Fairfield, Woodbridge, and Orange from DURG B, and Easton and Reading from DURG A. The following two pages show the results for the SAT. The grade 11 evidence-based reading and writing results show nearly 80% of our students meeting the achievement level. Just over 26% were at the exceeded, and just over 53% were at Level Three, met the achievement level. Grade 11 students ranked 42nd in the state in reading and writing, outperforming West Hartford and DURG B. Page 30, grade 11 mathematics. Just over 57% of our students met the achievement level. Of that, just over 16% were in the exceeded, and close to 41% were at Level Three and had met the achievement level. Grade 11 students ranked 31st in the state, outperforming Brookfield, West Hartford, and New Fairfield from DURG B. The last page is a compilation of all DURGs A and B that Region 12 had outperformed, and you can see it by subject and by grade. Now, we have a great deal to celebrate. We know that we still have targeted areas such as mathematics that we are focusing on, but there is significant improvement everywhere. So, I just have to thank the families, the educators, for the collaboration, because it certainly is a partnership, and we're really, really proud.
You all have every reason to be proud. It's a real progression, and not used to what we're seeing, quite frankly, so it's very nice, and good luck as we go forward. I know how hard everyone's working. Yes, Peter?
There are several things that we do. We can get very, very granular at the school level with the building administrators and the teachers, where they're looking student by student. Was there a student that slipped? Why did that student slip? All these students that went up, well, what was it that we did that made a difference for those particular students? Because we want to continue to develop our toolkit. We want to meet kids where they're at when they walk into our classroom, but we have a trajectory of where we're taking them. So, that close dialogue and analysis that happens at the school level is critical. In addition to that, since we do have three elementary schools, we also have the teachers collaborate together, where in the past, we have gotten subs, so that all kindergarten teachers can collaborate together, all first-grade teachers can collaborate together. So, we have coherence in the district that's very critical and important. And so, we do look at these results very seriously to make instructional and programmatic decisions. So, that, that's just, you know, in a nutshell, a lot of the hard work that happens behind the scenes that you don't see.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yeah, and we want to continue this. We're just starting, you know, with the new assessments. We want that progression and growth to continue.
Alan?
This is really great. Alan, is, this is the first time that you presented this in a, in a bound...
Yes, if I showed you what our printer was bleeding through ink, it was really, really tough for you to have been able to read it, so I had no choice.
Oh, well, because the thing is, now that we have this...
Yes.
Now that it exists, you know, it's one of those things that, I wouldn't suggest we send this out to everybody in the region, but it'd be nice to have copies of this available for distribution, or at least for...
Oh, in each school?
Yeah, so that this, it could be, for presentation, so that people can grab copies of it and thumb through it, or that even our towns...
Town halls?
I know our town hall would really like this, and I'm sure the other towns would too, as we, as we do, you know, we want to make sure that everybody who has any kind of curiosity about our schools can see this great work. And then, of course, I hope there are plans to, to package this and put it on the website in an easily locatable way, so that people can find it.
Certainly, I'm sure we can make that happen.
Valerie?
A couple of things. Well, first off, I do want to say also, besides the great staff and the hard, hard work and the brilliant children, I do want to do a shout-out to Ally O'Hara and her group, because those children are included in this. So, they're been, they have been held up also, and have accomplished a lot, because we take all those children who have some, some need, and we put them in with children who don't, and this is a great collaboration of all departments. So, hats off to Special Ed, absolutely. Just a follow-up question, though. You said that outplaced children, their test results come here as well?
Yes, they're part of our district results. Their set, their school is separate. They're not really attending a school here, but their results are still our responsibility. We're still responsible for educating them.
Right.
That's why we have...
But they don't benefit from our curriculum necessarily?
They benefit from what they need to meet their needs.
Okay, and one last question. On the SAT that the 11th graders take, that is a completely different animal.
Yes.
But they are sitting through a grueling three-hour SAT...
Correct.
...and are getting pretty well-prepared for the college prep.
Yes.
And have we seen that come forward, or is still too new?
This is the first time.
This is the first year.
First time. We use internal assessments. We use the PSAT. All of our 10th and 11th graders take it.
Yep.
So, we do have internal assessments that we use to really gauge the progress and readiness for the students.
Okay, and one more thing, a shout-out to Bridgewater. Boy, am I going crazy today. But they, yeah, because I saw two newspaper articles in which they're trying to bring children into Bridgewater, and of course, absolutely, this has to be part of the marketing plan, and to get, bring in tuition to kids, but this just so greatly enhances that effort, and anytime we can get kids to, parents to choose to come to Region 12 is a wonderful thing, and this helps greatly. Thank you, ladies.
Anyone else? Yes, Michelle?
This is kind of a question. So, I, I know that a lot of work has been done on curriculum in aligning with Common Core and SMART or Balanced, and it's so exciting to see the fruits of that labor. And I'm just wondering, you all know the students, and we do have small populations, so I'm wondering, you know, it's, when you're looking for, okay, where do we go next? You know whether there are places in the curriculum we want to tweak versus... You know whether there are places in the curriculum we want to tweak versus there are some students that are struggling. Where, where do you feel you want to go next with curriculum? Like, what's the next place to look?
Well-
Based, based on, on what we've learned. And this is, we've only had two years, so it's kind of, um, you know, developing. And we're still, and also, I could, also would love to hear you talk a little bit about, you know, how things build. I know with Common Core, we were really concerned, that math curriculum and how much stuff we were pushing down, and, you know, how many years do they need to be within this new curriculum before they're on board? Like, we saw those 3rd graders in math, you know, they've, they've been, uh, it's been two years?
Sort of. For the new math program?
Right, right, right. So, so whereas, whereas maybe some of the older grades-
Right.
-are trying to play some catch-up and-
Right.
So when do we see those things leveling out?
Well, we had to, I mean, the middle level in particular had the, the most significant changes, and so it's a, it's like a balancing of trying to close gaps and, because the trajectory keeps going. What they're responsible to know at the end of that year is still there, and so we've tried to balance, to really front-load information that may be a gap and still push forward. So that is a work in progress. We're really having to go deeper analyzing what the teachers are doing, giving them time to work together. Many times, they're singleton, so if that happens, when you look at K-12, what other supports might there be that we can offer them if, at the middle level, for example, there's only one 6th grade teacher in mathematics? So we're definitely trying with consultants that do come in to help us to project and move forward more quickly. So that is a work in progress for the past couple of years. We've have had consultants coming in to work with teachers so that we are meeting the needs of the students and still honoring the standards that are required for them to move on to the next grade level.
Right. Great, thanks.
All right, anyone else?
Can I just?
Yes, Valerie.
You've got to do a press release.
Okay.
And it's got to be punchy, because there's a lot of statistics, it'll get a little boring, a little deep. So something good and punchy outlining the two general improvements, the 12 and the 15%, but then grab a few other statistics to back it up. Something short, sweet.
Thank you for the suggestion. Anyone else? Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Really great job. Congratulations to all the staff, really. Appreciate it very much. All right. Number nine, item nine, action items, and I don't know of any action items.
Very strange, wait a minute. Have you ever done them before?
What's that?
Unmarked action items?
I put it on the, it's a, it's a, I think I reported. It's a new item on the agenda. It was suggested so that if things are, would you please look into this, or would you, you know, have a question, but you'll report back to me? That should go on under, yeah, action items. So it's there. But I don't have anything on this meeting. All right, is there a motion to a, Valerie?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I know there, there's been some mail going back and forth from the state, and some of that, I, I just assume, I don't see Greg didn't make it after all, um, that there'll be some series of meetings to discuss the ramifications, which by the way, not a bad thing, has to be rethought through, but some, some of the critique perhaps might begin to fade as we get on the same page, but this is something that we need to get working on.
Valerie, thank you for that. Okay, thank you.
When can that happen? Is there a building committee?
Greg is not here, so I can't report when he intends, if there'll be a meeting planned or anything. I don't know. I assume it will. It can't be ignored.
Because we can, we, we have to give directive to Castle Booze at all through the building committee, because we should proceed, but perhaps in a modified way.
Perhaps. All right. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, thank you all. Thank you all for coming.